States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Presentation. We have announcements, awards, special. At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Boy, I'm ready, right? I am ready to go. At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on the agenda, announcements, awards, special recognition. Tonight, we have a very special celebration for Peachtree City. Cue the video.
Happy Birthday!
Because they're like the golf clubs. No one, that's like unique. No one else does that.
Peachtree City is like the place where you can do everything pretty much.
I really like the schools in the area.
The baseball fields.
But just the sense of community and safeness that this city brings.
Whether you're two years old or you're 80 years old.
How it continues to be a great place to live and that's why I love Peachtree City and that's why it's home.
One of my main things is the access within 10 minutes. I can be on my golf cart and be at the post office, the city hall, the library.
I like the playgrounds because they're big.
Everybody is so nice.
It feels homey. I like the community of it.
And when we left, my wife and I, Renee, we both decided this is the place we wanted to raise our family and we're so happy to be back and we look forward to being part of the next 65 years.
Yeah, I wish Peachtree City 65 plus more years, but happy birthday Peachtree City. I love you.
Happy Birthday Peachtree City!
Happy Birthday Peachtree City!
Now you can clap. Top that. I'd like to bring someone very special to the podium. Lee Elzroth is beginning her fifth year as president of Friends of the Peachtree City Library. Lee and her husband Gerald have been residents of Peachtree City since 1994. Lee calls the library her second place, having spent every Sunday of her childhood through high school with her father in a library. Lee has an ALA accredited library degree and spent over 30 years working in archives and special libraries. With her background as an archivist, it was a natural fit for her to serve as a consultant to the Joel Cowan History Room project under now retired librarian Rebecca Watts. Since Rebecca's retirement, Lee has continued to volunteer her time and expertise in the Joel Cowan History Room, creating finding aids with descriptive inventories and conducting background research on collections. Tonight, she is here to present a special gift from the Friends of the Library to the Peachtree City Library in commemoration of our city's 65th anniversary. Please help me welcome to the podium Lee Elzroth.
So nice to be here. Good evening. The Joel Cowan History Room at Peachtree City Library opened in 1987. Since then, the library has collected numerous personal papers, artifacts, and ephemera related to the history of Peachtree City. Work continues to identify and analyze the materials in the Joel Cowan History Room. With the help of volunteers and an intern to begin in the fall, much more work can be accomplished. As of 2020, early planning documents for this city from the Joel Cowan History Room are available online for anyone through the Digital Library of Georgia. These documents in a collection called, and this is a mouthful, Peachtree City Plans, Politics, and People: New Town Beginnings and How the New Town Grew. This describes the history of Peachtree City, one of the country's most successful post-World War II new towns. Dating from the 1950s to 2007, the collection contains prospectuses, master plans, maps, conceptual drawings, happen newsletters, and other records. So take a look. It's pretty incredible. The Friends of Peachtree City Library first inquired of artist Martin Pate, who is with us tonight, about doing a painting of Floyd Farr in 2019. And in 2022, we purchased the painting of Floyd Farr by Mr. Pate. It will be housed in the Floyd Farr Room on the lower level of the library and will strongly relate to an exhibit that will be unveiled in the room later this year. Because that portrait captured Farr's likeness as well as his contributions to Fayette County and Peachtree City, a twin portrait of Joel Cowan that does the same, was commissioned from Martin Pate with the help of Friends, of active Friends member Charlie Nelson, and purchased by the Friends earlier this year. Both paintings will hang behind the circulation desk for the next two weeks, so all our patrons will have a chance to see them. I'd like the Cowan family who are here, Joel and Jerry's daughter Jennifer Barnett and other family members to be up here for the unveiling of the portrait. And if Mr. Pate would come up too. This evening, in light of the 2024 recognition of the 65th anniversary of the founding of Peachtree City and the 51st anniversary of the Friends of Peachtree City Library, we present this portrait of Joel Cowan to the city of Peachtree City to be permanently housed in the Joel Cowan History Room. Does it look like I'm sucking?
That's good to hear.
Beautiful.
I thought it was just...
It'd be terrible if it wasn't.
Yeah.
I hate so much that they could be here. They wanted to be around.
He was very excited.
Very.
Mostly excited for these little guys.
Would they like to see you?
Yeah, does anyone want to say a few words? You can take the mic here if you'd like.
A total surprise, a total surprise, but... Just very humbling. My dad was very humbled. He loves this town. He's, it's his fourth child. He had three children, but it's his fourth child. He loves it. He has always, you know, he's here from the beginning clearly, but he is the first to say the ones that make Peachtree City are the people. It was the early people that took a chance on this small town and chose to move here, the Faltons, I mean, from nothing here and to the people that chose to serve the community in the leadership roles and continue to this day. He's always felt like everybody just kept Peachtree City in mind and made everything for the better and has, he's been very pleased with how everything has come to fruition and continues to. And by virtue of the fact that it's such a great place to live, all of my adult children have chosen to move back, which is a good thing. So we get to have four generations here in Peachtree City because with my grandchildren, his, my parents' great-grandchildren, it's a, it's a great thing. So this is quite an honor, very unexpected, Charlie Nelson. A real surprise, so thank you and I'm sure it will mean the world to...
If we can have Mr. Nelson come up for a photo, Mr. Nelson, and the council, if you all can come down, as well as the mayor, for a quick photo, please. Yes. Lee.
So we're gonna have some...
And we thank everyone in the audience for your patience. We will reward you with cake after the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. That's all right. We are looking at a very short city council meeting agenda tonight, and then there's cake. Guys, there's cake, so stick around. And in keeping with the spirit of the celebration of the 65th anniversary of Peachtree City and the leaders before us that Jennifer mentioned, I have excerpted with his permission an essay that was written from former mayor Bob Lennox, who was mayor from 1992 to, I believe, 2001, who is also pivotal to continuing the legacy of our founders. And this is something that he wrote upon the anniversary, 50 years of Peachtree City, and I can't believe that already that was 15 years ago because I remember it very well. "How did Peachtree City go?" And remember, Bob Lennox had quite a sense of humor, as you'll see. "How did Peachtree City go from being the end of the dirt road to a thriving community and a great place to live with success?" Two reasons: vision and leadership. First came the vision. We were to be a city with a capital C, hence the name. We were not intended to be a subdivision, a quaint village, a rural town, or a walled-off enclave for the well-off. We were to be a city, the economic, social, cultural, and business center for our little part of the world. "Let's build a city," the founders said. Think about what that means and all it takes to have a city. You need houses, big and small, along with apartments, condominiums, townhomes, and retirement villages. Factories, offices, and stores are essential so residents can have access to all kinds of business opportunities and jobs locally. Churches, schools, parks, playgrounds, recreation facilities, and programs all have to be designed, financed, and built so that the city is also a community. A good city needs a vibrant retail and hospitality sector to provide both shopping locally and a strong financial base for the city. Lastly, a city must have sound management and provide all the necessary public services in an efficient and cost-effective manner. Care to volunteer to help make that vision a reality? Well, there were, in fact, many such volunteers who gave up their time, talent, and energy to do just that. The second reason for our success was leadership that remained focused on and committed to the vision as it evolved and adapted to a changing world. Over the years, many people contributed in ways large and small. Some were volunteers, either elected or appointed. Some were city employees and some were developers. I moved to Peachtree City in 1982. The population was about 8,000 and we had one traffic light at Peachtree Parkway and Highway 54. We had no four-lane highways. Our city had created a good base for its future, but if you wanted to eat out, shop, or see a doctor, you pretty much had to leave town. Almost all of the things we now take for granted simply didn't exist. Over the next 20 years, Doug Mitchell, Steve Black, and Jerry Peterson of Peachtree City Development Corporation, Jim Basinger, city manager, Jim Williams, city planner, Fred Brown, mayor, and myself provided the leadership that turned that long-ago vision into a modern-day reality. Having been there, I can tell you that it was often contentious and maddening and always difficult and demanding. For everyone involved, it took patience, perseverance, hard work, creativity, and sometimes great courage to keep moving ahead. No two of us who live here would completely agree on what our city should be, but in the end, someone has to make decisions which are exceedingly complex, balance the needs of myriad constituencies, and ultimately affect the quality of life for thousands of people. In return for making these decisions, community leaders often get to endure accusations ranging from stupidity to outright dishonesty from mostly well-meaning but essentially clueless citizens who either did not get just what they wanted or who consider themselves the anointed ones who will maintain the purity of the vision. I can tell you that being mayor was the most difficult job I ever held, much harder than running a large company. Nearly all of the people who have served our city over the years as elected, appointed, paid, and volunteer positions have served the city faithfully and well. Their decisions were made because they were considered to be in the best long-term interests of the city. I'm proud to have been our mayor for 10 years. I'm proud of our community. I will always treasure the opportunities I had to work with intelligent, honest, and caring people in pursuit of a difficult goal. I'm proudest of the fact that our efforts did create a place to live that is far better than most and that we did make the quality of life better for thousands of people. And Jennifer, and Scott, and Leah, and Caroline, this continues to be your family legacy. Thank you so much.
Oh, can we go home now?
Oh, there's cake.
Public comment. Not till cake.
The first person signed up to speak is John Dufrain.
Mayor, Council, John Dufrain. As you know, the city collects a $45 registration fee for each residential golf cart for a registration period of three years. The maximum allowed by state law for a registration period is $15. The city states in the Code of Ordinances that the registration period is three annual registration. The city charges and collects $15 for each supposed annual registration. The city council discussed registration fees for the short-term rentals at their 16 November 2023 city council meeting. The city attorney made some interesting statements during that discussion, I think are relevant to golf cart fees. He said, "The fee itself will be directly tied to whatever costs are associated to it." The city can't make money. It's a regulatory fee. It has to approximate the cost of whatever it costs the city to register or provide that service. The fee, depending on what you eliminate, will go down automatically. The second annual registration of the registration period began January 2024. There was no registration service provided by the city for which a $15 cost to the city can be directly tied to. The city made money from a regulatory fee. And as the city attorney said, the city can't do that. Council should change the ordinance to make the registration fee $15 for the registration period of three years so that you know the city attorney helped write the current ordinance with a $45 fee.
Next person signed up to speak is Lloyd Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Lloyd Smith. I'm the president of the Peachtree City Pickleball Club.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Pickleball club. We are the largest pickleball club in the state of Georgia. We have over 800 members and we represent countless people who play pickleball in Peachtree City who do not belong to our club. I believe Peachtree City is a crown jewel in Georgia, and I want to thank you for your hard work to keeping this a special place to live and play. Three years ago, I joined a pickleball club, about 100 members. I learned to play pickleball. I learned to play correctly and safely. Today, I play. I meet friends on the court who have become lifelong friends and I love them dearly. We went, I went from a minimally fit 72-year-old to an energetic and ready and active player thanks to pickleball. Today, the same club, we have over 800 members. We trained over 1,000 pickleball players in the last three years. We teach them how to play correctly, competitively, and safely. And with this expansion of our club, we know this is the fastest-growing sport in the world and it's happening here in Peachtree City. Some players are on the court every day, some meet friends on a weekly basis, but very few give this sport up. We are seeing the infancy in pickleball and we're going to continue to grow in the years to come, and our city needs to be prepared for it. Presently, many of our members must travel outside of our community to find courts to play on. And while they're out, they stop at grocery stores, have lunch, have dinners, gas stations, which they're taking our revenue away from Peachtree City just to play pickleball. Pickleball players around the city are aware of the recreational master plan you are developing and are waiting for positive news we can give them on the construction of more courts in Peachtree City. We have the players to fill these courts. We are in dire need of more dedicated places to play other than the six courts at Lockhouse and occasionally at Kedron Fieldhouse. Players are voicing the need for more courts in our city. If we built 40 courts today, I could fill them up tomorrow without a doubt. We urge you, Mayor and the city council, please make the pickleball a priority as you represent us in the master plan development. We need your help. We look forward to seeing great things continue in Peachtree City. Thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Your time has expired.
To keeping our city special.
Next person signed up to speak is Sue Reed. Final person signed up to speak is Ralph Hale.
My name is Ralph Hale. I live in Crab Apple Woods. This is short about short-term rentals. How does it benefit neighborhoods? If you're trying to sell your house and the house next door is a short-term rental, you think that's going to increase the value of your house? Why did we not put this on a ballot referendum for people to vote on? I don't quite understand it. Would you buy a house next door to a short-term rental? I just, I... You guys are deciding. You've been voted in to make the laws for what goes on. I just can't understand how you configure that this is good for the citizens of Peachtree City. Thank you.
There are no more speakers. All right. Agenda changes, council? None. Here are none. Minutes: February 6, 2024, city council workshop minutes; February 15, 2024, regular meeting minutes; February 15, 2024, executive session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I've read these minutes and I would recommend that the city council workshop minutes as well as the regular meeting minutes and the executive minutes, meeting minutes be approved.
And that would be a motion to approve, Frank?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. We have four, and yes, I need to read them into the record. Fiscal year '24 budget amendment, father-daughter dance sponsorships. Sponsorships $1,000 from Haffey &amp; Linkus Orthodontics and $500 from Au Pair in America. Consent agenda item B, Chick-fil-A South Side Stormwater Facility Maintenance Agreement. Agenda item C, Chick-fil-A-Kedron Stormwater Facility Maintenance Agreement. And D, 2024 Statewide Mutual Aid Agreement, Jima Homeland Security. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda item A, 32401, approved purchase contract for property located at 102 Guthrie Way, Peachtree City.
I'll take this one.
Sir.
Yeah. So our esteemed city manager's not here tonight. He's feeling under the weather, so I get to take this one. For the past, since I've been here, for the past three years, we've been looking at possible solutions for more space needs, more office requirements for our police department, more space for them to be able to do investigations for evidence storage, for office, all kinds of stuff. They run out of space over there. We've looked extensively at building a building behind the current PD. We had plans, we were moving along to do plans for that, and then this property owner came to us and this deal has kind of fallen into our lap to possibly do this and make this probably the largest city facility in the, that we own up to this point. I think city hall is 21,000 square feet and this would be 21,000 square feet. So what we were looking at was 4,000 square feet for about the same price that we're possibly going to get this in because of all the new construction costs and all this. So we're very excited at this opportunity for the police department to be able to expand and solve a lot of the problems we have with spacing needs with them. Plus, we get a really good state-of-the-art training center that a lot of law enforcement agencies are already utilizing in this space. We do have Chief here tonight. If you want to ask her any questions about the needs of police or spacing needs they have, we've got the attorney here if you've got any questions about the agreement. But other than that, staff is very excited about this and does recommend council approve this.
Counsel, questions, concerns?
Oh, ma'am, I think this is an outstanding opportunity for us.
Outstanding opportunity. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, as a retired federal law enforcement officer, it gives me great pleasure to make a motion to approve the contract to make this purchase.
I'll second.
Mr. Maker, we have everything we need in that motion?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Counsel staff topics: A, request to defer public hearing for sign variance at 100 Huddleston Road to July.
This is me again. Robin, Robin is also feeling under the weather.
Oh, wow. They're dropping like flies.
Our staff is dropping. Our staff is dropping with sicknesses right now. So this is, this came before council before. I believe it was, was it? It was tabled then?
Back in December, I believe it was.
Yeah, it was tabled then. It was scheduled to come before you tonight. They have asked to extend that to July based on their scheduling. So that's all this is, is a continuance until July.
Do we need an exact date?
No, and in fact, this is just a council staff topic. This is more of an FYI and to gauge if there are any objections or concerns. Otherwise, it was scheduled to be on the next agenda, so it will not be on.
On the next agenda.
The only question I have...
Sir.
The only question I have is July is always a very difficult month because we sometimes only have one meeting in the month of July. To try to throw this and whatever other business the city has in that one month, maybe we should think about at least putting it to the first week of August. If that's acceptable, that's just a thought that I had. The applicant is requesting it be continued, so we'll just let them know that that's going to be the target date. Is that acceptable under this council topic stuff? I think it's going to need to be. Okay.
Sounds good. Concerns, questions?
I just think we ought to leave it up to the applicant.
All right.
If it fits in July, great. If it doesn't, then they can move it again.
All right.
Clint's points not lost on anybody, though, in terms of normally, you pack a lot into that one July meeting.
Right, agreed.
All right. Anything else, council staff topics?
Yeah, a couple more things. I wanted to call our fire chief up to the podium to make an exciting announcement. I think we've announced it in a couple of other forums, but not before council yet.
So I wanted to call you tonight, Mayor and Council, and tell you that...
Your mic is not on.
Okay. There you go. Ow! Mayor and Council, I wanted to come before you tonight and let you know that I've received a letter from the ISO, which is our insurance service organization. They rate the fire departments across the nation, and we have retained our Class 1 rating for the city, which we've received twice now. This is considered, we're considered an elite fire department among insurers. Out of 50,000 fire departments across the nation, only less than 500 are Class 1. In the state of Georgia, there are only 24 fire departments that are ISO Class 1. What that means to the citizens sitting in this room and inside the borders of the city is that you get the lowest insurance rating that you can get whenever you apply for insurance for your house. So I just wanted to pass that good news along to you. And we're going to eat some cake here in just a second. We can celebrate.
Justin?
Last thing I have. To help celebrate the city's 65th anniversary, we will be providing various ways for our residents to earn or win a new commemorative challenge coin throughout the rest of the year. So we urge our residents to sign up for the SLICE newsletter, which is our weekly newsletter. It comes out on Mondays. To download the Navigate PTC app, which is the new path navigate app we came out with late last year. And attend some of our engagement opportunities, such as our Coffee and Conversations or Slice of the City, where we come around to every village. And as well, follow us on social media for any opportunities to get yourself one of these limited-edition 65th Anniversary coins. And I think there's a short little video to show what they look like. So that's what they look like. I think they look like that. I think they came out pretty good. I did not make that video.
Anything else?
No, that is all I have here.
Hasn't staff done a wonderful job so far on our 65th anniversary for Peachtree City? Let's hear it. Do we have executive session?
Gosh, no.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? We stand adjourned, and it's time for cake.